So let's see, it's the 3rd of November. Okay, as a preliminary matter, this is Pete Pecos on the chair for the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda for November 3rd. Our president can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Larry Murphy?
Yes, present.
Thank you. Leslie Matthews?
Here.
Wonderful. Woody Knight? Mary Stone?
Yes.
Wonderful. Town staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Martha Taylor?
Here.
Thank you. Emily Noble?
She is here.
Here.
Wonderful.
I'm here.
All right. Good evening. This is November 3rd, 2021. Open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with the Act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, which extends the governor's March 12th, 2020 order of suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GO, Chapter 138, Section 20, until April 1st, 2022. This order suspends the requirements of the open meeting law to have all meetings in publicly accessible physical locations, and allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the planning board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website, and which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http://zoom.us and entering meeting ID 83271413056, or by calling 929-2056099 and entering the meeting ID number when prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that the attendees are participating by video and/or telephone conference. The meeting is also being broadcast live through local access cable channel 9 on Zoom and on www.tncTV.org, and the recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube channel. Meeting materials were provided to board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak, and if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention before and after you've been called. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effect and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As the chair, we'll introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members, inviting each by name to provide any common questions or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer with the mute button, or on your phone with the star 6 to toggle to mute and unmute when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds or earphones with tablets or cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you, and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any responses, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the chair. With regards to public comment, there'll be an opportunity for public comment or questions during public hearings, but please note there's no public hearing scheduled for tonight's meeting. After board members do speak, I'll afford a public, an opportunity for comment or questions. I will seek questions or comments through the Zoom raise hand function. For video conference participants, to raise your hand, hover over the bottom of the Zoom window, below the photo gallery, click on the gray hand that appears. Please ensure that your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participants' list. You may rename yourself by using the more functions next to your name. For telephone participants, to raise your hand on the Zoom meeting, hit star 9 on your phone keypad. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order in which they are listed, which is determined in the order in which people click the raise hand function. Each participant will be called on to provide his/her name, his or her name and address, and then ask questions. I'll make a comment. I will afford the applicant or participant, or his representatives or her representatives, the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for questions. I will then continue down the list of those with raised hands column, and afford the participant applicant representatives an opportunity to speak. Should there be any physical electronic submittal of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record, and again, the participant applicant representatives will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not yet been addressed. Again, each vote tonight will be taken by roll call. Let's see. Okay, Martha, I'm going to now go over to the agenda.
Right, and if I may, you might want to know that we have three members here, so that constitutes a quorum.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to minimize this and hopefully get to the right screen over here, and pop up the agenda. And so, um, let's see. First item on the agenda, appearance submissions. We don't have anything scheduled. For new business, we have review of draft legal documents for 15 Coleman Road, Philstone Lane, OSRD. Martha, do you want to pop those up and kind of go through what those components are for us?
Sure, let me. Hopefully, I can do this.
All right.
So, um, we have two versions of the the open space deed. Perhaps we can start there. We've got the one from Essex County Green Belt, and also one that I had annotated. So shall I try to call both of those up?
Can you do that and separate the screens?
I'm going to see if I can do that.
Okay, beautiful.
Great. Thank you.
So, um.
Okay.
So there's one.
This is going to test your skills, Martha.
I know, it is testing my skills.
Separating them, I like it.
So. Yeah, and you're probably seeing them a little differently than I am, so I'm not quite sure. Not sure what you can see right now.
So all that we see is one.
Because they're separated. They're separated on my screen. Maybe we should just go through sequentially.
Yeah, I think we're going to have to do that because it's only showing one image at a time.
Okay. All right, so, um, can you see the one that I annotated?
No, because right now, the, yeah, it's kind of, so I think we're going to have to delete. Okay, so we might have to exercise again.
Yeah, okay, stop, stop the share. Okay, can you see this one?
Yes. Perfect.
So this is the deed for the conveyance of the open space to Essex County Green Belt. I had some comments and questions here, more. You know, some of them were just sort of typos and stylistic kinds of things, like, you know, why are the quotation marks show up every time we have 8121? And that was kind of a note to me to confirm the final revision date to make sure that was consistent. Going down this sentence here. Responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of the stormwater management system specified therein and other matters. My question was, what other matters? And that was really it from me for this. Do you want me to pull up the other one?
Let's see if anybody has any questions or concerns with regards to this right now. I'll just run down the line. Larry?
Well, I think if you look at the Green Belt version, they they addressed those extraneous quotation marks you were talking about, Martha. In other words, they took out the quotation marks after MA 01913, and just left them after the revision date. So either way.
Okay.
I mean, that was just highlighting the title to the on the plan.
Right, but it was double quotes, so.
Was, yeah, yeah, but anyway, Essex Green Belt corrected that on their version. But I have a question for Tom. It's unrelated to what you just spoke about. Tom, I was a little confused about the address for the LLC. I, obviously, at the time the plans were created, I guess that was an Amesbury address. Is that correct?
Yes, Larry, the, uh, my address, I was operating my business from my home at 15 SD Street in Amesbury at the time of the application and at the time of the, of the plans. I have subsequently, you know, taken a new office space back at 21 High Street in North Andover. But, uh, so, you know, the, the plan references to my, to my LLC should certainly stay as 15 SD Street, relative to the plans and applications that were submitted.
No, I agree with you. I agree with you. That's the title. Where I was going with that, though, I was curious, so I looked up the information on the Secretary of State's website. They have a different North Andover address for the LLC. They have 4 High Street, Suite 201, so it's not, it's not consistent with what you have on the deed. I think you probably need to, to address that in some fashion.
Yeah, let me, let me address that. I'll address that with you now, and then I'll address it in the next, in the next couple of days administratively. My previous office, before COVID, yet my office had been for a number of years at 4 High Street, Suite 201 in North Andover. We, we closed that down when we moved to Amesbury, which was just over a year ago. That was just after I filed my last annual report for my LLC, which, as you know, are filed once a year, and I think I'm coming up due for that filing again in the next few weeks. So we didn't do an interim, an interim update on that, you know, on the, on the annual report yet, and we'll be doing that, and we'll take care of that in the next couple of days, and then it will show up as 21 High Street, Suite 300A, and that'll be the address of record.
Yeah, I mean, you just don't want that to come back and bite you with some future.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, the last year, as everybody knows, there's been a lot of, a lot of juggling of spaces and a lot of juggling of, of operating locations for a lot of people, and we're, we're no different in that regard. We just didn't want to, you know, submit, submit a filing that was then going to have to be revised again a few months later.
Okay. Very good. I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Larry. Any questions or comments?
Excuse me. No, I don't have anything at this.
Beautiful. Mary?
No.
Okay, is Woody with us yet? Not yet. Okay, cool. So Martha, do you want to go to the the Green Belt?
Yes. Can you see that now?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. Because it was still up on high screen. Sorry, I may have, I may have inadvertently lost the redline version. So I'm going to pull up the clean version. And can you see that?
Yes.
All right, if you want, I can try to retrieve the redline, which might be a little easier. It's up to you.
I think we're good with this. Yeah. So, Tom, we'll have to address that address. Okay, yep.
Yes, and Peter, can I jump in with one other comment?
Sure.
Just that, that I have looked at the, the Green Belt revisions. A lot of them were, were typos or, or, you know, you know, other grammar issues, but I didn't see any issues with any of the revisions they were looking for, just from my perspective, just to the extent that matters.
Yeah, that was one of the questions I had, whether you'd had a chance to review and had any, any concerns about their suggestions or revisions.
They seemed routine to me, Martha.
Okay.
I just have the, your redline on my other screen here, so I'm just looking at both kind of the same time here. Can you advance that a little bit, Martha?
Yes, I can.
Beautiful.
Set far enough?
In a touch more. Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
And advanced just a touch more? Okay, it's not classified as corporation for federal tax purposes, okay, and that looks good. Does anybody have any questions? Larry?
No.
Okay, Leslie?
No.
Mary?
Just wanted, the issue of the town council weighing in eventually, is that the plan?
Well, I guess that's a question for the board, whether you feel that these are straightforward enough. Otherwise, I, I can get, kind of go back and ask council again. Since council wasn't really involved in this project, it would really be more for form than, than content.
Okay, all right, well, that's fine. I, it seems fairly.
No, yeah, just to address that. Larry, are you pretty comfortable with the form?
I mean, as, as far as this goes, yeah, I, I mean, as far as the deed goes, if Essex County Green Belt is satisfied with this deed, I am. I, I just, as a general rule, though, and I'm not talking about necessarily this project, but anytime we're dealing with, with legal documents of, of, of this magnitude, for lack of a better term, I think it's just best practice to have town council review them for form. I mean, you don't know what you don't know, and Brian and Lisa do this every day.
Appreciate that. With that being said, Martha, any other comments with regards to this, the Green Belts?
No.
Okay. Well, I would, if we're comfortable with going forward with this, I'd entertain a motion.
Unless you'd like to, to have a final version with the address corrected and all of that.
I'm open for discussion. Larry?
Yeah, so you want to take, you want to address them each, each document separately?
Well, I would, yes, I think so. Yes.
I mean, Martha, realistically, are we, are we going to have town council review this, do you think?
Um. I, I did reach out. Haven't gotten anything back. I can try again.
I mean, when I'm, when I'm thinking is, is moving approval subject to review by town council. On the other hand, I don't want to hold up the developer forever either, if we have a problem getting that done. So that's the dilemma I'm dealing with here.
Larry, if town council has not been involved from the beginning, then they're kind of stepping into it. Yes, they do read these things all the time, but nuances everything along, right?
And Brian did review the, the two decisions for us, but that was the extent of their involvement.
And so if they reviewed, if Brian reviewed them, and if he found a problem, he probably would have come back with that information, correct?
Well, he, he did with the decisions, but yeah, these, these have not.
Right, council hasn't vetted these documents as we see them.
No.
So the decision was made and approved at the beginning, but there'll be two documents. So the question in my mind is, if town council has not been involved from day one, then I, I think we should just move on, because this could be it just seems unnecessary to me at this, at this point, if they didn't think it was very important to ask for a review of the documents.
I had just, I had asked the question whether they would be able to, so they haven't seen the documents.
So honestly, Green Belt has, has reviewed this with their legal team, right, Martha?
That's correct.
So it has been reviewed with, with a legal eye towards it. And Tom, I think your, your legal team has probably reviewed this as well?
Yes, for sure.
Okay. And nothing's glaring out at us, so, I mean, we can do it one of two ways. We can have it subject to review of the town, town council, or we can just proceed forward. I'm going to ask the applicant if he has a, as a preference or as a concern.
Thanks, Peter. I appreciate you letting me, letting me express. I, you know, time is always very important on these things. We, you know, we want to be able to get the transfer to Essex County Green Belt and, and be able to transfer 15 Coleman, you know, in relatively short, short order. And I hate to have this, this linger, you know, you know, multiple meetings for, for stuff that I think is relatively routine and has a lot of eyes on it, I think, at this point. I, you know, I, if, if, if it was a more complex process, then I, then I'd certainly defer to that, but I, I'd really like to see, you know, some kind of conclusion, if it's, if we're all comfortable with that.
Sure. Okay, I'm going to go back to my co-chair then. Sir Larry?
Yes.
Your thoughts then?
I mean, I don't have any problem with, with the, with the Essex Green Belt deed.
Okay, great. Okay, then. If we want to do these individually, I will entertain.
I'll move to approve the draft Essex County Green Belt deed.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Wonderful. Any discussion on the motion? Discussion, Larry?
No discussion.
Discussion, Leslie?
None.
Wonderful. Mary?
Just that this is pretty much coming down to a judgment call of the planning board members, and my call is that we move it along and avoid the legal review.
Okay, wonderful. That being the case, how do you vote, Larry?
Yes.
Wonderful. Leslie?
Yes.
Wonderful. How do you feel, Mary?
Yes.
Beautiful, and the chair is in favor as well. Okay, next step, Martha.
All right, so then the next, the next deed is the one for Lot 1, 15 Coleman. So. Which is here. Are you able to see that?
Yes.
Okay.
And you want to just bring us up to speed with what's going on with Lot 1?
Um, well, Tom, Tom might be able to, to kind of fill us in.
In terms of, in terms of the document, Peter, or in terms of status out on the site?
How about status?
Okay, the, well, the, the status of the site, just in, in general, was that we're expecting to pave the binder tomorrow, tomorrow morning. The, we do have a, a buyer for 15 Coleman, who is a, you know, a couple who have done a number of extraordinary rehabs of, of older structures, very experienced, and I'm very pleased with, with having them be, be my buyers out there. They're excited, they're going to be living there, and, you know, we want to transact that as soon as we can, obviously, because they want to, they want to get into the rehabbing of it specifically.
Okay, wonderful. Martha, let's just kind of go through this and see what we need to address.
All right, so some of the same, same comments regarding the punctuation and the quotations. I think the, the biggest question really is the language on the second page that I've highlighted here. The premises are also conveyed subject to the condition that the existing house and barn structures on said Lot 1 are to remain in place in their configuration, and all significant exterior architectural features of both structures shall be retained. That's essentially the language from the condition in the decision. And so I guess my question was, is board comfortable with this? Or, or is there any sense that, that there should be any, any sort of amplifying language?
Peter, could I jump in on one thing on that?
Sure, Tom.
I appreciate you having, letting this be somewhat interactive here. You know, I understand, we, we pulled that directly from the decision. You know, it certainly isn't, isn't something that, that I'm opposed to, to, to strengthen that, if you want, with any, any, something to the effect of any significant exterior modification will be reviewed by planning and the historic commission, or something to that effect. Just so you know, I mean, I don't think that's an unreasonable, you know, amplification or strengthening of that. I don't want to get it into a multi-page, talking about every nail and every, and every splinter, but if there's something like that, that makes people more comfortable, then certainly, you know, I think it's a reasonable thing to do for this property.
Okay, Martha, can you slide that down? I think it advanced a little bit.
I'm sorry.
Yep, yep. Okay, so we're basically putting into this document the language that was in our condition. Let me just pull the board. Larry, what's your feeling on that?
I mean, if, if that's what the decision says, that's what the decision says.
Yep, and it does allow for town boards or the components to modify this condition. Okay.
I mean, I take Martha's point. I just don't have any great language to add to it.
Okay. Leslie?
Well, I think if, you know, it came down and the decision was made, then it was, everybody agreed that it was the right way to go.
Okay, cool. Mary?
Yes, right way to go.
Okay, cool. Martha, I think we're probably pretty comfortable with that, then.
With the existing language?
Yes.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
And then I think the next, the yellow highlight, I think that was on the version that came to me, so I'm not quite sure why that was highlighted.
Okay, Tom, did that come through you?
Let me just double check it here. One second. Yeah, then that's a standard reservation of, of the rights in the road for access to all of the, all of the lots and infrastructure there. That's, that's a pretty standard thing. I don't know why it's highlighted, to tell you the truth. I think it may have been highlighted when, when it came from my attorney's office. Initially, it didn't have that in there. We talked about it needing to be in there, and I think he added that and highlighted it for me, and I just sent along the highlighted portion. So I, you know, I don't think there's any other significance other than calling attention to it because it was added early in the process.
Well, you're reserving the, the fee in the way to the LLC. At the end of the day, are you going to, are you going to convey that to the HOA?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, yeah, and, and need to, so that, that has to, you know, has to, has to be reserved for that purpose, for sure.
No, makes sense.
All right, I guess then that explanation from your attorney is why it was highlighted and then inserted. Okay. Let's see, is there anything else of concern with this, Martha? I think the remainder of the language is.
Yeah, I mean, there is nothing else.
Okay. That being the case, I would entertain a motion to accept this.
Motion to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
Wonderful. Discussion on the motion, Larry?
No.
Leslie, discussion, motion?
None.
Mary, discussion, the motion? Okay, great. How do you vote, Larry?
Yes.
Wonderful. How do you vote, Leslie?
Yes.
And Mary, and how do you feel?
Yes.
All right, chairs in favor as well. Beautiful, Martha, that takes care of that.
All right, just one note here. The form of performance guarantee was a covenant on the lots, and at the time that that was drafted, there was no exclusion in there for either the open space lot or the, or Lot 1. So I think Tom is going to have to make a formal request to the board to release those lots, and the question will be, you know, whether, whether the condition in the covenant is actually, has been met, because I think, I think the condition is that the roadway and services to lots being released need to be in place.
Martha, if I can jump in, I was expecting to do that immediately after paving, probably 10:30 tomorrow. Some, sometime after tomorrow, because we, we intend to pave tomorrow morning. And I didn't want to submit the request on an anticipatory basis, because On an anticipatory basis because we had originally planned on paving last week. But of course, the weather that stopped us, so I wanted to make sure that the paving was there, the access was 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 safe and sufficient before making that request.
All right.
So hopefully, I get that into you and we can get that on a, you know, a soon agenda for, you know, for consent.
Right, okay. I have one sort of practical question. I know that the the septic system for the entire development is on lot one. Yes. So that that obviously is not going to be completed. For lot one, and I think there's also a little bit of tweaking that needs to be done because of the shed location.
Yeah, the we have we we it's a minor, it's a minor two-foot adjustment to the field, Martha, just so you know, it's not a it's not a significant thing, but but we. That septic system will will be in this month in the next few weeks. Would have to be for any transfers anyway. I would. I guess because of the timing on that. I can see how quickly that goes and gets into place, but. I I think I would like to have submitted the request for release. But have the board condition it upon. Title V approval of the of the completed septic system prior prior to prior to recording of that release. I mean, does that seem like a reasonable approach? The the system is for all of the lots there. That's correct.
Right. Does that include the bonus lots?
I'm sorry?
Does that include the bonus lots?
Yes, all seven lots are on the same common system. That's correct. So so once we complete that system in the next few weeks. That means all the septic is done for the entire site.
Great. Watching the project as I drive by.
Larry, thoughts or concerns?
I am kind of losing the the threat of Martha's concern again. Was it Martha that?
So the concern is that the septic system that is currently on lot one. The entire, all the dwellings, all the homes. Tom is looking to convey lot one, but the septic system isn't, you know, isn't going to be functioning or isn't functioning yet, so it's kind of a matter of timing.
Well, unless you got a cash buyer, I don't I don't think any bank is going to approve a mortgage until the you got a septic system up and running anyway.
Oh, yeah, we would we would we would never even consider transferring until that septic system is done and approved with a title V certificate for the entire system. Yeah, that no no transfer of lot one or any lot would ever happen until that system is entirely completed and.
Yeah, so the buyer's lender is going to is going to require that.
Yeah, but I wouldn't I wouldn't expect the board to 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 release it to me. I mean, I think I'd be overstepping my. You know, you know, my. I guess my position, if I asked the board to release lot one prior to. That being done, I would what I'd like to do, just because of the timing of meetings and the time of year and all the things that we have to contend with, is submit the the request. But in that request. Requested the board. Vote to release that lot. But subject to the, you know, us providing that title V certificate for the system. Prior prior to you actually giving me the release document to record.
Yeah, I mean, my view of what we're doing here is is approving these documents to form, not necessarily releasing any lots from. From the, you know, performance guarantee.
Right, right, right. I mean, Tom is going to have to make an official. Request to release those lots, and so I was just pointing out to the board that that actually needs to be done in addition to, you know. Deeds.
I think we're all on the same page.
Yeah, so then, Tom, maybe we can talk about the the timing. It may it may be that that work is done. You know, we're meeting, the board is meeting on the seventeenth, and then again on December fifth, so.
Okay.
You know, if if title V were in hand, it might make it a little bit cleaner.
No, no. Well, let me let me work on getting the request in in a in a some form to you, Martha, and you can. If you want to see it in a different form, then then that's fine, but and I'll try to gauge the the schedule of the work and and, you know, if it can be done on the seventeenth, fine, I. I suspect we will more likely be be hoping for that on the fifth.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, Tom, if all goes as planned, when would you anticipate closing lot one?
And it was originally scheduled for around Thanksgiving. We did take longer to produce this in part because of. My having my second hip or both of my hips replaced in the last three months, so I haven't I haven't been as on top of everything as as I might have otherwise been. But certainly, I we want to do it by the middle of December. There's no reason other than getting the septic system in place that that they shouldn't be able to 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 get into the work there pre pre-winter, if you will. So definitely in December.
All right, Martha, is there anything other any other considerations?
No, that was all I had.
Okay, cool, wonderful. Tom, do well with your rehab. Hope the hips work out well. Two hips, two knees. Rock and roll.
The knees and knees are next year, I hope. And the if if I can, the the HOA and covenants documents, Martha, are those?
Yeah, so those are on for discussion tonight as well, so I do.
Okay. Okay.
So if you'd like, I can bring. Let's see. This is the. Homeowners Association. Document Declaration. Some of some of what I had was, you know, same thing, some typos and quotation marks and. I had a question in this one, which I think is addressed in the covenants about protection of the witch stone or father stone. With regard to the purpose of the association and their responsibilities. Tom, the version that we had had two-thirds vote in it. I assume that may have also come from your attorney?
That's that's correct. It was highlighted for my to call my attention to it, so.
Yeah, okay. And then this was just a question, express written approval of the Newbury Planning Department or Planning Board. So that's kind of a question for the board, I think.
Well, Martha, what do you like to be called? Department of Board?
Well, you're the board on the department.
So I. I I I think the department is fine because the department will ask the board. Wouldn't that be the case?
If you're comfortable with that, that's fine.
Perfect.
And then on paragraph nine, I had a question about. Whether there should be mention. Mention of use of Fieldstone Lane and related related parking area to access the open space.
Well, Martha, if it isn't in that, if it isn't in there, it's certainly in. It's it is somewhere if it isn't in that.
Yeah, I think it might be in the in the covenants.
Yeah, I think it is, yeah, so it. The, you know, I don't know that that's really a homeowners association. You know, item, but it definitely in the in the restrictive covenants, it definitely belongs there for sure.
But this is some of the, excuse me, this is some of the language, you know, releasing the town of Newbury and agreeing to indemnify defendant hold harmlessly owners. This might be some of the language that that could benefit from from town council review.
Yeah, I would tend to agree with you on on this, Martha. It might be good to have other eyes on this. Larry?
No, I agree. That that was the point I was trying to make earlier.
Yep, yeah, I think this should maybe.
Martha, what's the language about the witch stone in here?
I think it actually is not in this document. It's in the in the restrictive covenants, which is the other document.
Right, I mean. It's problematic, quite frankly, because taking these. These documents together, I I don't think that it's explicitly set out as. As it needs to be, frankly. And it's going to even get more. Potentially more confusing. One slot seven is conveyed. As to whose responsibility it is. I think that needs some work.
In addition to what's in the restrictive covenants, Larry, or just are you talking about the HOA document?
Well, I think it should certainly be be referenced in the HOA document. Let's see, I'm just looking now. I'm jumping ahead on you a little bit here, but on the. Declaration of Restrictive Covenants, paragraph seventeen. Witch Stone, also known as the Father Stone, shall either be maintained in its current location protected from damage. But permanently enduring construction by means of landscaping or other means acceptable to the planning board. If the board deems that it cannot be so protected in place, it may be relocated at the direction. Of the planning board after consultation with the historical commission and other appropriate agencies. It doesn't really say whose responsibility. It is certainly in the first instance, it's the LLC. But like I say, one slot seven, we're not even frankly, I don't think we even know. If the witch stone is within the public right of way or it's actually located in lot seven.
Well.
So it's ability is going to be in the long in the long term.
The challenge with that, Larry, is that the, you know, as is typical, you know, the the boundary is is the center of the wall. And.
Right.
Yeah, so so so, you know, the the front half of it's in the in the right of way, probably, and the back half that's in the on the lot, probably, I think. So I think it's. I'm not sure how that. You know, it doesn't it doesn't get resolved as to as to who who owns it. Unless it gets moved, really, or or something. I think if there's some language that makes it the responsibility of. If if it's to be moved, you know, if it's the responsibility of of the developer. For some period of time, I'm I'm happy with that. I mean, I, you know, and I'm hoping I'm around for a long time, but. You know, maybe the, you know, maybe for ten years or something that the the. The the grantor is responsible for that movement at the direction of the of the board or something like that is is okay with me.
Once you convey the lots, once you convey the the, you know, the the fee in the right of way. That's that's difficult. I mean, personally, I think the right and the responsibility ought to be in the HOA, but. I think the homeowners association document needs to specifically cite that, and and any deed to lot seven also needs to reference that, too. Because it it it's problematic.
Yeah, I I think I I think, you know, knowing how HOAs are to deal with. I I think it would be a a more a more concrete and a more. I guess. A higher level of assurance if that if that obligation stayed with with the developer or the trans or the grantor, meaning my company or me. You know, it's it's a single person, a single entity, rather than dealing with a, you know, HOAs are tough to deal with sometimes. I think you all know that. condo associations, HOAs are not the easiest thing to deal with. I would, I'd feel I'd sleep better being held accountable myself. Rather than having it, you know, fall on a group of people. Who who I don't know yet.
Well, that's the problem. I mean, there there are three potential entities to, you know, to. Care for this thing. One is you, as you said, but at some point, you're going to be out of there. Okay, and. And and if if some portion of this thing is on lot seven, that's somebody else's property. That's private property. So I don't think we want to leave it to some unknown buyer of. Of lot seven and the HOA, I agree with you 100% that. You know, that they can be difficult to work with. I'm just.
It's well, is there is is there some is there some logic in? You know, putting in. Deed restriction, a specific, a more specific deed restriction in in the lot seven D. That would make you comfortable. I mean, I'm certainly, I mean, we all we all want the same thing. Everybody wants the same thing. It's a question of getting. Getting the. The format, you know, and the and the and the responsibility. You know, identified to your to your satisfaction. I mean, I think it's a good idea. I just. It may be a deed restriction that. Which there should be any way on that on.
There absolutely should be, but I I think, well. I guess what I'm wrestling with, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I I think we're dealing with with the several poor choices. I don't think there's a good choice here and. In all honesty, again, I I don't want to revisit what's already been resolved. I don't think I should stay there personally. I think should be moved. You know, the the board doesn't agree with me, so I'm just looking for the best out of several bad solutions.
Let me ask a question.
Sure thing, Leslie.
Tom. How long do you plan on staying? Basically on board with this project? Did you say something about ten years or? Something to that effect?
Well, I'm I'm hoping I'm done next year.
Okay.
I'm hoping.
Is there another way to protect the stone? Even if it doesn't remain in Newbury, could it join its partner at the Smithsonian? If you so willed it to be? Or the historical commission here in town?
Well, you know, you know, maybe one of the I have a suggestion that might. Might make people comfortable, might not. What if I just carved out? You know, a trapezoid there around. Around the witch stone, right out of. Lot seven. And just. Deeded that to the town. I mean, and just keep it, you know, keep it out of lot sevens, out of the lot seven lot. I mean, I don't think we've ever discussed that. We don't need the frontage. It has nothing to do with our access or our area. We don't have an area or frontage issue there. We can carve out. Not even an easement, but we can actually carve out a, you know, a fee, a fee interest to the town surrounding that. That stone. You know, certainly no issue with that, and it and then. It makes it clear.
And would be that portion that you the stone sits on would be become town property.
Would become town property. I'm so I'm actually surprised we never had that discussion before. To tell you the truth, that it seems it seems like it it gives it gives all of the interest in that stone to the town. I mean, I'm still held accountable for protecting it before and after anyway by the decisions. But.
Sense to to leave it in place. Than moving it to another location in town just to keep it as a historical. Monument for lack of a better term, but. If that's a way to do it, that that sounds like an interesting prospect.
Yeah, I I don't certainly don't have any hesitation about about making the commitment to do that. You know, and, you know. I mean, that. I mean, that that doesn't resolve the the where is it going to be forever question, but it does resolve the hey, whose is it? Question.
Right, and that's a big for all. That's a big question.
Yeah, I mean, this is, I mean, I. I mean. I would be happy and proud to say that's mine, like everybody else would, but but it's a it's it's a community asset. And, you know, I'm surprised we never discussed. Carving out a small piece of that lot and 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 just eating that over. I mean, that's something that's a very easy thing to do.
So, very interesting discussion right now, um, I just want to uh uh, I just wanted to touch base, Martha, your thoughts on the dynamics of doing that?
I'm actually um wondering, um, you know, whether whether this this discussion might benefit from town council input, there may have been similar situations. Um, you know, where council has dealt with something like this. You know, in terms of responsibility, in terms of the fact that it's, you know, it's it's sort of partly on private property and partly on on you know, the town's right of way, which is what it's been, it's been, you know, partly on Woodbury property and and right on the boundary line between the Woodbury property and and the town's right of way. So council may have some suggestions on on how to, you know, best deal with this issue.
Okay, I I think then we have two things uh to to get council involved with, um even though they haven't been in the past, I think we've we we need to uh explore this uh this discussion point that we're having right now about carving out um um a lot, as uh Tom has suggested, and deeding it over to the town. And then asking council, has that been done, what would that look like? And Larry, I think I'm 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 following your lead, that I think this uh the these two documents that we're looking at now just need to be run through council, I think I'd feel more comfortable with that, just so.
I think so.
Yep, okay. Uh, and Tom, if you're comfortable with that, we'd like to uh go in that direction, uh and then we have a few weeks, uh a a couple of meetings that we can button this up with, if we get a rapid response, I know our council has been a little bit uh busy with other things.
Would it would be nice if we could see if we could get a response back from at least by the next meeting, Peter, given and then and then if there's things that we need to do, and in the meantime, I'll I'll uh uh start drafting a a a concept on that, on on that uh, on that fee interest there in anticipation of that being acceptable.
I I think that's a, that's 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 very helpful, and it keeps that this with the town, uh and uh it defines it clearly.
Yeah, I'm really surprised we didn't talk about that in that in that way before, um, but I'm glad we did now.
It's it's the beauty of discussion and 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 working through a process and not jumping, it really is. Uh, as long as you keep big rocks on the other side of it, I'll be really, really happy.
We have bigger ones we can put there, they're pretty big.
Beautiful, beautiful.
You can put that in a lot seven D or something, I mean, that's, you know, to maintain that.
Very good, all right, um Martha, I think we're good then here.
All right, so if uh, if we're gonna have council review both, do you want to take a look at the restrictive covenants? Uh, just pass those.
Let's pass those for now, and and let them, you know, give a little insight, and then we can spin it around. Okay, good. Beautiful, all right, very good, okay, being the case, Tom, I think we're going to release you.
Okay, thank you, folks, very much, nice to see you all again.
Your willingness to work with us.
Very, very helpful.
No problem.
Thanks, Tom.
Yeah, bye bye.
All right. Let me pull up an agenda again. I have too many things open, okay, so, um seven twenty, so we we had a nice long discussion, uh okay, uh, we haven't had a long friendly discussion on something like that, well, which is very helpful, so, um under old business, we have a couple of things to kind of uh revisit. So, we're talking about revisiting our discussions of proposed or proposed zoning amendments. Which were originally included in the twenty twenty Tommy the warrant, so Martha, do you want to start driving this?
Um, sure, uh, so as Pete said, we had been looking at a number of zoning amendments. I did, and we're ideally targeting those to be on the twenty twenty annual town meeting warrant. And uh, both because of COVID and because we had so many applications and public hearings to deal with, these all got put on the back burner, but since the the hearings for the moment are are closed, and we have a little bit of an opportunity, it seems like this might be a good time to uh to revisit them, and we may have some different thoughts about them now since time has passed. Um, so the first one, we started talking some time ago about revisions to our solar bylaw. You know, largely in response to some of the the questions that came up as we were going through permitting of you know, of of the uh, the Borrego one in particular. And we had talked about, uh, you know, possibly revising revising it to be a little bit more in sync with the requirements of the smart program, which it's, which basically states that it doesn't make, uh, provide incentives for certain kinds of things like prime farmland and prime prime woodland and things like that. But we never got very far with it. Um, we had a little working committee, and um, you know, just we weren't able to move it forward, so that's one. Pete, do you want me to just kind of run through the list?
Yeah.
Okay, um, the second one was the revisions to our wireless communications bylaw, and there's still, um, you know, quite a bit of interest in and in in moving this forward and concern about the the dead zones that are in town. We had hired the um, our consultant, David Maxon, who had drafted a bylaw and, you know, done the drive-by to identify the kind of the dead zones and make suggestions on where we could put, uh, you know, put some additional cell towers and language to you know, bring our bylaw up to speed, and again, that one was just um, we had a, you know, a substantial draft, but it was never finalized. The third was revisions to the dimensional requirements particularly pertaining to lots. And we had some language that uh, you know, we were going to propose for that. That also got put on hold, and I've actually come across some additional language, so I think I think doing, you know, doing another review of that and seeing what what might make sense for our, you know, our town, I think would be a good, good thing to do. Uh, one of the, one of the ones that I've seen recently actually um, set some minimum dimensions in different areas, but any part of the lot that doesn't meet those requirements gets excluded from the lot area in terms of zoning compliance. So it's kind of an interesting way to look at it. The next one was housing related, we had talked about making some revisions to our table of use regulations to allow multifamily housing in other parts of town, right now we allow it um, by special permit only in the Evergreen Business District and also in the Byfield Village Business District. Uh, we do also allow it uh under the OSRD, but um, you know, it's it's very limited now and uh, you know, just looking at the the huge need for housing in in uh, in different types of housing and housing in different locations. Um, you know, it seems that that's one that should be revisited.
Martha, when you, when you're you're talking about multi um units, you're talking about more than two, right?
Um, actually, yeah, well, yes, more than two, or um uh, you know, right now, multifamily up to four is allowed in Byfield Village and Evergreen Village districts, and that's it, we don't allow anything more than four, so.
Right, but two is still permitted as a matter of right, I believe.
Yes, yes, this is two family, yes, yeah, so it's three or more. Uh, the other thing that we had talked about was developing an inclusionary zoning bylaw. And Emily's done some research on on bylaws in other communities that we can take a look at. And then zoning required for green communities, we adopted, we did manage to adopt the stretch code. But there are, there may be some minor tweaks of language that need to be done with regard to um R and D facilities. So I think that was the other other zoning thing that we're gonna look at for for green communities. And then there are probably others, um, there still is a major uh sort of recodification planned to kind of go through our entire bylaw. And we've certainly seen some some things recently that uh that could be tweaked, but these are ones that we had highlighted before and that we might be able to focus on.
Thanks, Martha, so, you know, these are things we've identified in the past that are of importance to the town uh and would be beneficial to put energies into. Uh, the wireless, we've already done some legwork on, uh, the dimensional stuff, Larry, you did a lot of legwork on, and it looks like we have some uh other pieces of Martha's uh, done some some work on the inclusionary components been done. Uh, stretch code has been done, but zoning, so there's already some pieces that to these projects that have been initiated. Housing is going to require some energies which will be good, and solar needs to be. It does need to be revisited, so with that that's, but one, two, three, four, five projects, and I'm looking at five board members, oh, oh, oh. So, here's kind of a thought, we can break this down into work groups, uh, we can break this down into tasks that we all do together. Work groups can report back to the to the board to kind of help us, and the work groups can be comprised of, you know, Martha, myself, and 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 one individual, and we can do these little triangle work groups and have those feedback uh with with recommendations to the board, and so that the board can then digest and maybe then process. I'm always a believer of breaking stuff down into little pieces, uh, and everybody takes ownership of something. Uh, but that's how I like to work uh with organizations, so I'm kind of open for discussion, so let me kind of go around, Larry, your thoughts.
Well, if if, talking about work groups, um, it's a great idea, it's a great way to proceed. I think under the open meeting law, though, that we they would, we would have to comply with all the requirements of the open meeting law as a some committee.
Understand that, yep.
But that said, yeah.
Leslie.
I think if you were break down into the groups, then you are able to cover more subjects with less chefs in the kitchen, I guess you could say, so you could uh cover your bases, get your information, and then report back to the the chair and Martha.
Um, Mary.
Is that reporting that become public?
Yep, absolutely.
What about the groups getting together, is that a part of a public?
So, a- as Larry was indicating, anytime that we would be meeting together, we would have to meet all the requirements of
Yeah, I understood what you said, I just want to call. Okay, thank you.
Yep, cool, so does that make sense to you?
It does, thank you.
Good, Woody.
Yes, I like the work group idea. It works, works for me.
All right, um, Martha, I didn't ask you your thoughts.
Well, I think the question then is how, you know, how to, how to best support the work groups and and you know, pro- provide information or means to find information to you know, come up with a final product that we can actually work towards town meeting with, and um you know, ev- every time we start this, we think that we have tons of time, but in fact, we need to, because of the public hearing requirements and the schedule for the warrant and everything. Um, if we want to get any of these on the warrant for next town meeting, we really need to start working on them right away.
So, that being the case, would it be helpful to, uh, as as in the past, you've developed a little matrix of of dates and and thresholds that we need to achieve, so we start to put that together, just so we understand what we need. Um, and uh, we can uh tonight, bless you, uh, uh, who has interest in 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 what component? Um, and um, uh, then we could start, you know, meeting and uh getting communication going uh to help facilitate this. So that we can see which ones are going to be realistic uh to to get to uh, the warrant in a timely manner, because we're in November right now, uh, and just things would have to be pretty, pretty tight by February, Martha?
Yes, you know, at least tight enough to be able to make a recommendation to the select board to, you know, consider putting these on on the warrant so that they can refer them back to us for for public hearing. Um, if I may say, I think probably the the hottest ones in terms of either communications that I've had or issues that we've had, I think probably are the wireless and the dimensional, the lot lot dimensions. But, I mean, they're all, they're all important. And one, one thing that I think might be helpful, um, I reached out to the mass planners list serve recently um for something and got about seventeen, a lot of responses um to my question, so one thing that I I was going to do is to reach out to see if anybody has good examples of solar bylaws. Maybe wireless communication, although we went through that before, and the dimensional requirements. Which, um, you know, then I can pass those examples on to who's ever involved in those work groups.
Okay, um, just uh, from from my memory sake, where did we leave off with our consultant uh on the cell uh on the communication?
Basically, he finished his scope of work, he gave us a final draft, but it was very much in redline form, needs to be cleaned up. And the other thing that needs to be done, so that that was revision to the bylaw itself. And kind of thinking about it in in a slightly different way. And we did, you know, he mentioned some target areas that we might consider adding to an overlay district or something like that.
Right.
Um, the other thing that needs to be done as kind of a corollary is having the select board, um you know, adopt um a bylaw regarding grant of location, so for any uh wireless facilities to be placed on, uh, say, utility poles in our right of way, that would be a grant of location from the select board.
All right, let me just see who who has, might have interest in uh any of these five uh components. Larry, would you be interested in going back with dimensionals?
Yeah, I I certainly would, but if my memory serves, we never we kind of pulled back on that, didn't we, because we got a lot of uh pushback from the select board on that.
Well, we got pushback, we were sort of tying it to the um, the driveway width. Uh, component of that, so I think that's really where the pushback came from, you know, we were looking at for driveways over two hundred and fifty feet, you know, making twenty twenty feet wide for fire access, um, which is not not an NFPI requirement for single and two-family houses. So there wasn't so much pushback, I think, on the looking at dimensions of lots themselves.
Okay. So kind of looking at this from a different perspective, I think, Larry.
Yeah, um Yeah, no, I'd be happy to continue, you know, with that.
Okay. With regards to cell communication, does anyone have any interest or jumping in there?
You know, may- maybe that's one, um, if um the first step might be to clean up the draft that we have and and get it out to everybody.
Okay, we already have a skeleton or or working draft, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, if if memory serves, um, that's ninety percent there, isn't it?
Yeah, I'd say between eighty and ninety percent.
Yeah.
So maybe that might be just a staff issue and then circulating it?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so we're looking, um what what do we need to do with regards to our green, green communities designation sort of piece?
Um, I think it's really tweaking the language, um perhaps just in our table of use regulations regarding um R and D facilities. So I think that might also really potentially be a staff
Okay.
Thing, and we are going to have to do a complete overhaul of our table or or review of our table of use regulations, but that might more appropriately happen during the recodification process.
Okay, all right, um, so that brings us down to solar and housing.
I'm interested in solar.
I'm interested in housing.
Look at that. All right, you got that, Martha?
I did.
Okay, um and um, Woody.
I'm interested in the solar as well.
Okay.
Hey, Woody and I get to work together.
Good. Like it, I like it, I like it, good, um.
So for housing, would that include the inclusionary bylaw as well as, as. Changes to our existing bylaw for more locations?
Yes, why not? Yeah.
That also include like forty Bs to bring us up to. Our percentage.
Well, that's certainly part of the whole housing discussion and that, that would be, you know, one goal if we can. You know, find locations for some multifamily housing or other ways to help facilitate getting us up to our ten percent.
Okay. Okay, that sounds good.
And that kind of leads into the discussion of other planning board projects. Which we can get into after we talk about zoning.
Okay. So let's talk about zoning.
Zoning or the other projects?
You said you wanted to talk about zoning before we talk about the projects.
No, I mean, that's, that's kind of, that's, that's where we are right now in talking about these specifics. Specific areas and zoning to target. In addition to the sort of longer range, which we're not ready to address yet, that will be working with. Counsel on that.
So.
Other planning board.
So there are some that we were also working on previously. One was implementation of our existing housing production plan, which gets back into the housing question. And, you know, as part of the implementation, implementation, developing zoning, which will facilitate. Greater diversity of housing as well as more affordable housing in different locations. I think, and this is something that I'm going to talk to Merrimack Valley Planning Commission about our housing production plan. Was approved by DHCD, but it was for the time period from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two. So. It's probably not too soon to start working on. You know, either an update or an entirely new plan, and I'm not sure which that needs to be if we already have an approved plan.
So conversation with MBPC about direction and.
Right, direction. You know, last time they were the umbrella and they did, they did the regional housing production plan as well as the individual housing production plans for our member communities. This time, I think. You know, it looks like the member communities are going, going forward, developing their own. So I sort of, I want to talk to MBPC about. Capacity and you know how we might go about doing this.
Okay, so I think we should, we should institute those conversations.
Yeah.
So five projects significant. And we might need to, once we start looking at these, find which are going to be on a faster track. And which might require maybe a longer period of time to put into place. And I think those are discussions that we'll just have to. Have as our meetings progress, but at least we have the opportunity now with a little bit of breathing room for our board to do this. So Martha, would it be best to circulate maybe out some. Calendars to find out what days are going to be best to try to facilitate. Getting together in, in small work groups and maybe we can, you, you and I can sit down and. Get some bullet points as to what would be most beneficial for each of the groups. And Larry, if you want to participate in this process too, so if we. Kind of give direction to each of the groups as to what their, their tasks are and what we're looking for, maybe timeframes. Realistically, that might be a, a good starting point in giving direction for this.
Yep, no, that's fine. I just had another thought. Martha, I hate to keep putting this on you, these things. It, it just occurs to me. You're not really creating a subcommittee here, are we? Where I'm going with this is since we're meeting and with less than a quorum, it might be. Worth asking town council if indeed we, we do have to comply with the open meeting law.
Right now, I was thinking, I was thinking the same thing.
I'm sorry?
There's only two members meeting with, with staff. I don't think we would, we would meet that, we would.
Well, I, I think it depends on whether or not it falls within the definition of the subcommittee. If it's a subcommittee, definitely you have to comply with the open meeting law. I might have been a little too precipitous and leaping to that conclusion.
Okay.
Might be worth a quick call to Brian, see what he says.
Good.
Or Lisa.
All right.
So, and then the other, the other major project that we really, and Mary brought this up last time, that we really have to, to finish up as the master plan. And, you know, I think I mentioned previously. We've got a couple of sections that were completely done, some that were still in process. There are data that need to be updated at this point. So the first step really is to develop a scope of work for consultant. To come back in to, to do some of that stuff.
Martha, may I ask, or bring up a point that. Everybody that was on the master plan, appointments have run out. So we're, we're all gonna, and anybody who's interested is going to have to be reappointed, correct?
Um, yes, and I'm not sure. I, I know that the, the committee was not reappointed. So I think that. Once we get the process going again, that might be the time to do that. I mean, under Mass General Law, it's the planning board's responsibility to do the master plan. But you know, that said, we did have. You know, other people who.
Right, we had, yeah, finance, it were people from finance committee and different, different boards and. Even just citizens that sat on the.
Right, so I mean, the first time we, we, we started the exercise, I think we had a discussion about. You know, who might be appropriate people to be on the committee, whether it was, you know, by position or interest or. You know, either position in, in the town as a department, like fire, police, that kind of thing, or conservation, different boards and committees. So. As we get this going, we might want to have that discussion again. And make, make recommendations, which is what we did before.
So let's start with the scope of work. Let's, let's get some direction from inside to see if we can reactivate. Who we had before as a consultant, if not, maybe there might be resources that they can direct us to, to get that process started. Then I think once we have that, Leslie. We can then start thinking about how we're going to incorporate other components within the community to assist with the process. But I think having. Direction kind of fine, fine honed so that we can hit the components that need to be revisited. And so Martha, we need to identify those in, in our scope so that.
Right. I don't know if this is still a possibility, but our, our former chair who moved to North Carolina had. Offered at one point to help assist with that if the board was all right with that. I, I, I don't know if it's still possible because he's got responsibilities down there. He's now the, the vice chair of the Community Design Commission and various other things. But I will reach out to him to see if it's still a possibility. If not. There is a planner in town who might be willing to kind of help with that exercise.
Wonderful. Let's, let's investigate both. I think, is there any concern with that, Larry?
No.
Beautiful. Leslie?
No concern.
Good. Mary?
I have no information. I'm sorry, I stepped out for a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry. We were talking about maybe trying to see if our previous chair who has a quite a bit of planning background. Who had volunteered at one point in time to help us with a certain components with master plan, if we could see if that door is still available to us. And if those, okay. Yeah. John's great. And if we can tap into his resources and with his experience, it would be helpful. Woody?
Well, suggestions sound great for Martha.
All right. Wow.
Okay, so we will, we will get that moving. That is a hot button item. So.
Okay, yes. Wonderful. Good, 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 good. Thank you very much. And I think this is, this is the direction that, that makes it exciting for the planning board to be doing. Planning and proactive sort of stuff. It's, it's really good.
Yeah, it's great to see this coming.
Good, good, good. Um, all right, October financials. Let me see if I can pull those up. I had them up. I had them buried in a bunch of screens here. See if I can find it. Oh, is it that one? Martha? Yes, can you, can you pull it up? I, I've gone through five screens, but I'm not.
Unknowledgeable.
Success.
All right, so you got it.
Beautiful. Planning Board Financial Report for October twenty twenty-one, payroll and invoices authorized. Payroll warrants for planning director and planning admin. PR twenty-two dash oh eight for pay period ending ten nine twenty-one and PR twenty-two dash nine for pay period ending ten twenty-three twenty-one. Planning Board expense invoices of Verizon Wireless, Planning Board iPad, ten twelve twenty-one and ten twenty twenty-one. And the ME PD annual dues for ten twenty-five twenty-one, return of escrow funds for completed projects. Oh boy, cheering crossing one seventy Orchard of ten nineteen twenty-one. Green yard, Newbury Upper Green, ten eighteen twenty-one. Playmakers Inc. Sixty-seven sixty-nine Newbury Port Turnpike, ten eighteen twenty-one Scotland Woods. Ten eighteen twenty-one, Stillway Storage, Newbury LLC, twenty-three and thirty-one Sled Road, ten nineteen twenty-one. Beautiful. That's very small print. You know that Martha? Good, I'm glad it wasn't just me. Thanks, Mary. All right. Okay, let's see what else we got here. So. Director's report.
All right. I've got a few things here. So A Solar is still working on their special permit application for the solar project on the landfill. I anticipate that that will be ready for submission at the next meeting. On the, on the seventeenth. So that will be coming in. And that would mean that we would be scheduling a public hearing probably in December, the second meeting, December. Samantha and I met yesterday with Tom Woodruff, the Facilities Director at Governor's Academy and their engineer. Mark Bodry. They finally have the funding of, to complete the Parker River Environmental Studies Building. And so they want to move forward with that. They're hoping to begin construction late winter, early spring. There are a couple of things there. There are a few modifications to the site plan approval and. The decision had also stated that they're going to put a dock in the river and, and the dock is actually going to have. Also be connected to a, a pump system that's going to pump. River water up into tanks in the building so that they can study different organisms and things like that. So the decision that we had written originally said that when the, when it came time for the dock, that should be a separate. Site plan approval. Application. I suggested to Tom that he come in to meet with the board informally at the next meeting to discuss what they would like to do. And I think. Perhaps we can also discuss how to package this. It seems like it might make more sense. To kind of package the application for the dock. With. Approval of some of the changes that they've done. The biggest one really has to do with the access from the building down to the dock itself. There was originally a staircase as well as a, you know, switchback ramp going up to it and they've modified that quite a bit. So it seems that it would make sense to put that all into one public hearing application. So if they submit informally or if they come before the board informally at the next meeting, then they would probably be looking to submit an application in December. If they're ready, they're still formalizing the documents.
That's great. They, they, they're funding together in two years. That's, that's significant.
Yep, they did. They also did have to go through some, you know, some significant value engineering, some of which is reflected on the, on the. Final plans, but because of construction costs, the target number also, you know, unfortunately changed as well. So.
Is it still going to have that beautiful exterior with the glass?
Yeah, so it's still all glass facing the river. And I think natural. Natural materials on the, on the rest of it. They had been trying to meet the, the living building challenge, which is sort of the highest level of sustainable construction. And it was just too costly for them to do that. So they, they unfortunately had to, to drop that goal.
Good.
But it's still very, very, very cool. And they're very, very excited about moving this forward. And I think it's, you know, it's a great asset for the academy with their location on the marsh and the river and all of that kind of stuff. And the other thing I wanted to report on is I had a meeting yesterday that was organized by Essex County Green Belt. With a consultant who is. Working for the American Farmland Trust. And the USDA on a project designating farmland of, of local importance. And. He's targeting right now, he's done this for several other communities right now. He's looking at Newbury. Haverhill and I think North Andover. And this would be a designation. There are already, there's a designation of, of prime farmland, which is land that's been identified based on soils to be best suited for. Agriculture. And then I'm reading from, from what he gave me, unique farmland, which has characteristics distinctive. To the production of a specific crop such as cranberries. Farmland of statewide importance suited to prop. Production but lacks all the criteria required for prime farmland. And that's set by this applicable state agricultural agency sets a criteria for that. And then farmland of local importance is defined in the Code of Federal Regulations. And basically. He's looking at parcels of any size. So it doesn't have to be, you know, if, say, if you're looking in chapter fifty-one or sixty-one A, that's five acres or more. And this could be a parcel of any size. That. Appears to be used actively for farming now that does not have the soils. Based on the soil survey. And. If we were to designate certain, certain areas farmland of local importance, then they also would be eligible for some of the USDA. Programs, which could be very beneficial, I think. So I think that this would be a, a really nice thing to pursue. I. So if, if, if this sounds interesting to the board, I can, I can certainly send you the information that he gave me, but. Then I, I think I would like to, to discuss it with Tracy and the select board. To, to see whether we would like him to go ahead. He's. He's identified a number of parcels just from aerial photography and overlaid those with the soil maps. And they're parcels that look like they're, they may be being haved or used for other agricultural purposes. And Woody, this is something that you might be able to. Help with to determine what the actual use is. And then. You know, the soils that are, you know, sort of underlying that land could then be designated. So. Anyway, it was, it was quite interesting. So.
Do you have? Information on that now, or did you say you've had a?
I, I have just sort of a flyer on it. I also do have. As a follow-up, he did send aerial photos of a number of parcels. Not identified by address or parcel ID, but sort of by location like, you know, east of Scotland Road and so on and so forth. So. You know, if you'd like to see those, I could, I could forward them on to you because I think you might have a good idea.
Okay, that would be great.
Okay. Okay, so I'll follow up with you after.
Yes.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you, Woody.
Yep, no problem.
What else you have, Martha?
And I think that's it for tonight.
Okay. Liaison reports. Leslie, select board.
A select board meeting was canceled last week due to the weather, so there is nothing.
Okay, great. ZBA, Larry?
I don't really have anything to report. They're meeting in two weeks.
Okay, I, I can fill in a little bit.
Okay.
If, if, if I may, the ZBA. At their October twenty-first meeting, they were going to discuss the AL prime decision, but they didn't have. The quorum to do that. They had a quorum for other items, but not for this particular. So they scheduled a special meeting. So they scheduled a special meeting for last Thursday, October twenty-eighth, and did vote on the decision, which has been filed with the clerk assigned yesterday and has been filed with the clerk. So.
Okay.
That has been done. I think their next meeting is November eighteenth, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. Good. Conservation, we met last night via Zoom. Of interest would be, I think Cricket Lane. Public carrying about two hours in duration. We were able, the commission was finally able to have a insight from Ann Martin, who has been hired as a peer review or help facilitate information to the board and answer some questions. And it was interesting because the, the commission had just received a significant amount of information from a butters butters attorneys, as well as some individuals with significant knowledge. That information was submitted. And there's question about, there's one existing Vernal Pool that is that is registered. There's one that is, has not been recognized. So it's kind of a an interesting walk that is going on right now. And as that conversation was taking place, the, the commission was continuing to look for information. And during the, during the conversation, the applicant asked, asked that the hearing be closed. What's different in conservation that's from planning is once the applicant asks for the hearing to be closed, it can be, it would be closed. And once it is closed, the commission has twenty-one days to render its decision with any conditions. So it kind of put the, the commission in a difficult situation. So they'll have a series of probably of discussions to vet out the concerns because there, the commission had a significant amount of questions and concerns that hadn't been answered. And there wasn't there was still some question remaining. So operating differently than our board, Larry and I, and I jumped right in. I said, well, you, you can't close that hearing. We can close the hearing. And it had to be pointed out to me that conservation doesn't work like that. Conservation actually can, can have their hearing closed by the applicant. And then you have twenty-one days to, 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 to button it up. So it's interesting how our different boards function differently and with different guidance. So that's what's going on with, that was the biggest occupier of the, of the evening. I think we finished at eleven o'clock last night. So.
Still doing those long.
Well, you know, we got done with our meetings going into the wee hours. And so anyways, hopefully that won't be continuing too much longer. So that's what's going on with conservation. MBPC, Martha?
So MBPC, I actually attended two meetings since our last meeting. The commissioner's meeting was on October twenty-first, and they usually try to have a guest speaker there as well as going over regular business. You know, which includes approving the warrants and contracts and getting updates on everything that their staff is doing. But the, the guest speaker was a fellow named Noah Berger, who is relatively new administrator for the Merrimack Valley Regional Transit Authority. And he was just speaking about some of the initiatives that they're trying to do and and, you know, impact on, of COVID on, on ridership and all of that kind of stuff. So that was, you know, that was interesting on the transportation end. And then we had a planners' meeting last Thursday and the guest. There were two guests from the Essex, Essex Community, Essex County Community Foundation, talking about the digital divide. And sort of inequality and, and access to, you know, to the internet in Essex County. We actually, they've done a report, which I'd be happy to forward to everybody if you're interested. We actually are doing pretty well compared to some of the other communities. I think we're more than you know, more than eighty-six percent of our households are connected, more than ninety-five percent have a laptop or other commute computer. There's one area which seems to have less access. Looking at the map, it's the area sort of bounded by High Road and then east of that, not including Plum Island, but kind of going, you know, to the edge of the marsh. So it was just you know, interesting to, to hear what they had to say about.
Was that based because of population distribution housing?
I don't know. I think it's really and I want to follow up with them a little bit more because I'm not quite sure. You know, I, I know Comcast feeds down there. It doesn't feed everybody. So that may be part of the issue.
Is this socio-economic?
No, I mean, it's, it's pure connectivity.
Okay. I mean, the company.
Yeah, I mean, it does get into, you know, in, in some areas, I think more than ours, it does get into, you know, questions of, of equity and, and social justice and so on. I think here it's probably more, more technology, if I can put it that way.
So Martha, you indicated Comcast doesn't get, the content cast does not facilitate for the entire community, does not provide service for the entire community?
I, I do know people who don't have Comcast. They have DirecTV or satellite, various other things. So I don't know whether it's because they can't have Comcast there. You know, if the line isn't running or if there are other reasons that they're doing that.
The same situation like being able to get cell communication. It does, is there like interference the same way that they just, you know, they just can't get the information to them because of the lines or the area?
Yeah, I mean, we really didn't get into that. So I can't, I can't give you a good answer on, on on why. But I'll forward the report to you all and you can at least see that. And there's a link to, to a census map that shows the area that seems to be most challenged or has the least penetration, I think is the way they, they put it.
Yeah, it's so important since so much of our daily existence is with technology today. So.
But I think that's a concern also about, you know, really updating our wireless bylaw because there's so many people, especially with COVID, working from home and they're relying on, you know, on their internet service, on their wireless connections to, to do their business as well as, you know, normal household stuff. So.
Good. Does anyone have anything else?
I do not.
I'm not seeing any hands jump up and down. All right. I don't think we have any minutes right now. Is that correct, Martha?
That's correct. Not quite done with those.
Okay, good. That being the case, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Woody. Let's see if there's any discussion on the motion. Discussion, Larry?
Not for me.
Leslie, discussion?
None.
Woody, discussion?
None on the motion.
Oh, good. Mary, discussion?
No, sir.
All right. How do we vote, Larry?
Yes.
Oh, good. Leslie?
Yes.
Wonderful. Woody?
Yes, and sorry for my tardiness this evening.
Not a problem. Mary, how do you feel?
Oh, yes. And good night, everyone. Thank you very much.
Everyone, thank you very much. Appreciate it. And I look forward to, to getting, working on some of these projects that we now have some time to do.
Great.
Have a good night.
Night, everybody.